Yeah.
Amazon's got it, brother.
Yeah. Good morning. It's another beautiful day here in Manatee County and maybe Thursday won't be such a beautiful day with the storm coming, but today's a beautiful day here in Manatee County. Every day is a beautiful day here in Manatee County. I'd like to welcome everyone and call to order the Board of County Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, September 24th. This morning, as we do every meeting, we worship our God and pledge to our great nation. This morning, for the invocation, we have Pastor Philip Hamm from the First Baptist Church of Palmetto. Thank you, sir. And to pledge, and to do the pledge this morning, we have U.S. Army Sergeant, First Class Veteran, and one of our very own, Adam Gaskino. It was close, right? All right, we're close? All right. If anyone would please rise for the invocation and for the pledge. Thank you.
Well, if you'll bow and pray with me. Lord, we want to start our day by quoting the truth of Scripture. And so we go to the prophet Jeremiah, Chapter 6, Verse 16, that says, "For us to consider the ancient paths, where the good way is, and to walk in them, and there we will find rest for our souls." And so, Lord, I pray that as this governing body does their business today, that they will consider the ancient paths, the path of you, the path of integrity, the path of character, the path of honesty. Because, Lord, what we live in is a community and a culture that is very much in unrest. Maybe it's the public political unrest, or maybe it's the unseen private unrest, or maybe it's simply the unrest of a storm that bears off our coast. But, Lord, what we need is the rest that is found in you. So I pray for this body today, that you'll give them the wisdom to consider the ancient paths, and they will lead us to the rest that is found in you. Lord, thank you for guiding us this morning in your word. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your service to our community and to our great nation. Thank you. All right, this morning, we're going to jump around a little bit because we have folks that need to get back to the EOC and back to their fire districts in preparation for the storm. So before we move forward into any of the agenda, County Administrator, do we have any updates? Yeah, you're good.
Yes, sir. The Agenda Item Number 23, Sea Flower, Phase 1, Final Platte, has replacement pages numbers 17 and 18 to correct its Scrivener's error. All other changes and updates to the agenda have been published in the electronic agenda.
All right, thank you, sir. What I'd like to do now is to bring up Public Safety Director Jody Fisk, and she's going to give us update on the storm, and then we'll go into the two agenda items we need to bring forward.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jody Fisk, Public Safety Director. So at our 7:00 a.m. weather briefing, I'm sure many people probably had their phones going off early this morning with aerial flood warnings. For Coastal Manatee County, they are in a hurricane watch. The remainder of the county remains in a tropical storm watch at this time. Currently, the earliest arrival time of winds they are projecting is going to be incredibly early Thursday morning, probably around that midnight, 1:00 a.m. timeframe. We are projected to be getting five to eight feet of storm surge with the current forecast track that is always subject to change. The rainfall is predicted to be six to eight inches with those isolated pockets of 10 to 15. Currently today, we still have 11 sandbag stations that are open and operational. Those will continue through today as well as tomorrow. The special needs call down for our special needs clients is beginning today to reach out and make contact with them. Our utilities and public works continues to go throughout the county to make sure that the ditches, debris is out of the ways to allow water to flow freely. And our parks will be closed starting Wednesday until it is safe for everyone to return to the field, which, of course, is dependent upon impacts. So I would encourage everyone who has questions, mymanatee.org/storm, call 311. And if anybody has specific questions for our team, ask if that be routed to our teams, and we will answer as many of those questions as we can. So at this time, I am requesting that the board declare a local state of emergency, following suit with the governor's declaration yesterday.
Is the resolution out there? It's on consent? All right. So we just leave it on consent, right, Madam Attorney? Okay, thank you. We'll leave it on consent.
All right.
Thank you. Any questions of Director Fisk? Seeing none?
Hmm? Thank you. I'm very well rested.
Being that we need to move a couple items forward, like I said, based on we're going to get people back to the EOC and out to their fire districts. Director Fisk, are you bringing 54 forward? Item number 54 on...
I am, for the COPCN.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. So as you all know, we did brief you last week regarding the application for the Duet Fire District COPCN, with that recommendation initially being denial based on our significant concerns about potential staffing problems. I'm very, very pleased to report today that with close collaboration and cooperation with Chief Parker, we have come to an agreement where Manatee County Public Safety EMS will stand at the ready to support, should the need for additional staffing come up, so that the ALS care is available 100% of the time for the residents of Duet. So at this time, it would be the staff recommendation that we approve, the COPCN for Duet, and I am here as well as Chief Parker, if there are any questions.
Okay. There has been a... What I do is open this up for public comment.
Well, it's an official public hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
We have to have the applicant come forward and...
Okay. Oh, you want the applicant to come forward?
You have to follow all the quasi judicial procedures.
Chief, did I come forward, chief?
And he has to be sworn.
Okay. Can you swear the chief, or swear at the chief, or swearing the chief? Good morning, chief.
Good morning. I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to be here, and I want to thank Public Safety for working with us and getting together and moving this forward, and I just appreciate your support. I know the citizens of Duets appreciate your support, and I promise you, we will make this the best it can possibly be and make this happen. And I just, again, I appreciate your support. If you have any questions of me, just, I'm here.
Are there any board questions for the chief? There's none for the chief. Thank you, chief. All right. What I do is, there's been a motion to move by, Commissioner Ballard.
We need a disclosure of any ex parte communication.
Okay, is there any ex parte on this? Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I had breakfast with Chief Parker, and he explained to me, you know, what, how, the benefits that he felt that would come from this. I just pretty much sat and listened.
Okay.
And I had multiple conversations with them.
Thank you very much. Thank you for disclosing the ex parte. All right, with that, we have a motion to be moved by Commissioner Ballard, seconded by Commissioner Cruz. I'd like to open for public comment. Is there any public comment on item 54? Is there any public comment on the phone?
It's quasi judicial, so it can't be on the phone.
Oh, that's right. It's quasi. All right, so seeing none, closed public comment. All those, cast your votes now. And the motion carries six to zero. Congratulations, chief. Thank you, Director Fisk. And are you bringing 56 also forward? Or is the chief?
Oh, Chief Brown for the...
Is Chief Brown here?
Yes.
Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. We're requesting, we did a pilot program for free pools that was passed by the board April 11th of 2023, an 18-month pilot program. What we're asking for now is this pilot program to be adopted permanently. With that, I don't see the presentation up here, but I can just give you a few numbers on it. So during the time period of the summer of 2023, from May till the end of August, Lincoln... Yes, ma'am. Is it up? Go ahead.
It's 56. We're jumping around.
There you go. Right there, that's fine. We can start right there. So the presentation here is, the Resolution 23061 was the pilot program that was from May 27th, 2023, to November 27th, 2024. What we're asked, the next resolution is R. 24162, Permission to Adopt the Pilot Program for Free Daily Pass to be waived for all Manatee County maintained pools permanently. All Manatee County maintained pools will be free to the citizens that are not part of organized event or rental. Organized events would be swim teams, scuba classes, water, sport events, and classes, just to name a few. Organized event, event fees amounts that have been approved by the B.O.C.C. will be charged for the type of event rental that is being requested. We have a fee schedule that we're working on now. Since we are not part of sports, and the pools aren't part of sports and leisure, we'll be submitting that to you guys for approval, hopefully in the next month or two. This here is just the pilot program and the numbers. So what we did is we captured the summertime from the beginning, May of, basically Memorial Day of 2023 till the end of August of 2023, and then the same for '24. As you can see, Lincoln had 39,085 citizens use the pool. GT Bray had a total of 22,904. Marble and East Bradenton were under construction, so we don't have any numbers for those time periods. So to us, the summertime was a success. The non-summertime, there was probably only a couple thousand people that used the pools during the non-summertime months. So our recommendation is to make this permanent. It looks, you know, to be a success for us. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Is there any questions of Chief Brown?
After this item, I would like him to stick around for a question.
Okay. All right, there's been a motion to move forward with Commissioner Ballard, seconded by Commissioner Bearden. I'd like to open for... I'm going to open public comment. Is there anyone that'd come forward on public comment? Yes, sir. Please state your name, county residence, and you have three minutes.
Glenn Gibson, for the record, Manatee County. This is a great idea. Appreciate you doing this. If you look at the demographics, who actually use public pools? They're not the folks in your gated communities with their private clubhouses and pools. It's marginalized communities. They're struggling now with every dollar. They've got to pay $0.50 or $2 to go to a pool. They've got five kids. That's just not cost-effective. You know, you look at how successful the free buses were. Who uses that? Service workers, blue collar workers. They love that. That's a great program. That's the least you can do for these communities. I'm right down the street from Marble. I can't wait for it to open. So I think the county's moving in the right direction, helping folks that need it most, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone in the audience like to come forward, speak on item 54, or 56? Is there anyone on the phone that'd like to speak to item 56?
No callers.
Thank you, sir. Seeing that, I'll go ahead and close public comment. If anyone wants to cast their votes now. And the motion carries six to zero. Thank you very much. Commissioner Van Austin-Bridge.
Chief, I had a storm-related question for you.
Yes, sir.
At what point do you anticipate we'll be pulling guards off the beaches?
So this evening, I just spoke to Carmine. Once they lock the gates tonight, their last cleaning crew leaves, we'll lock the gates. We won't open the beach tomorrow until further notice.
Okay, perfect.
So Wednesday, moving forward, it'll be closed.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And Mr. Deputy County Administrator, at what point will county buildings be closing? I don't think I heard that earlier.
Yes, thank you, sir. The county facilities, all county facilities will be closed on Thursday. That includes the land use meeting will have to be rescheduled. The parks, libraries, solid waste service is also going to be canceled on Thursday, so your typical Thursday service will be on Friday. We are planning to have Friday service on Saturday, but we'll continue to monitor the storm as it progresses. In addition, the athletic fields will be closed starting Wednesday night, as well as GT Bray will be closing early on Wednesday for staging for water rescue.
Thank you, sir. Ms. County Attorney, the rescheduling, quote unquote, of Thursday's land use meeting, in the past, we have, the meeting has been opened by Ms. Shank and then continued. What is, do we have a plan for that? Because otherwise, we have to re-advertise.
Let me confer with Ms. Shank during one of the recesses, and I'll get back to you on that.
All right, thank you.
We have Ms. Knapp came forward.
Good morning. For the record, Nicole Knapp, Director of Development Services. We did confirm yesterday with Ms. Shank that we would cancel the meeting on Thursday because in order to continue it, the clerk and the county attorney and our staff have to be present in the building here in chambers at 9:00 a.m. to continue it. And so, given the storm, we've made the decision to be proactive and cancel the meeting. And then we have a new date of October 15th that's all marked on your calendars. And for any applicants where that date doesn't work, we will fit them in in October, November. But we will have to re-advertise. We cannot continue to that date specifically because we can't meet the public notice requirements. So new signs will go up, new mail notice will go out, everything like. So anybody that was informed before will be informed again.
Thank you.
Is that it, sir? All right, thank you, Ms. Knapp. All right, moving forward, getting back to the regular agenda. Moving forward, are there any items to be pulled from consent? Any requests by any Commissioners? All right, seeing none, thank you. What I'd like to do now is move into awards, presentations, proclamations. We need a motion. Need a motion to approve. I'll take it. Okay, it's up now. Okay. Motion is made by Commissioner Bearden, seconded by Commissioner Van Austin-Bridge. If anyone would please cast your votes now. And the motion to approve moves six to nothing, six to zero. All right, up first is a presentation on a proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month, and Commissioner Bearden's going to do that. I'm trying to take notes here, man.
Proclamation by the Board of County Commissioners, Manatee County, Florida. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated annually from September 15th to October 15th, recognizing the profound contributions and cultural richness that Hispanic and Latino Americans bring to our community and nation. And whereas more than 37% of Minnesota's region is comprised of Latino Hispanic families, this celebration provides an opportunity for all residents of Manatee County to promote unity and understanding across cultures. And whereas Unidos, now an organization dedicated to empowering the Hispanic and Latino community in Manatee County through education, advocacy, and engagement plays a vital role in empowering local Latino families to create cycles of opportunity. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that September 15th through October 15th, 2024, shall be known, designated, and set aside as Hispanic Heritage Month in Manatee County, Florida, adopted with a quorum present and voting this 24th day of September, 2024, signed by our chairman, Ron.
Thank you.
Is anybody here to accept the proclamation?
Not seeing one. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up is Suicide Prevention Day, and Commissioner Ballard is going to present that.
I'll let everybody from Centerstone make their way up. Whereas, for the past six decades, Centerstone has been an unwavering pillar of support for individuals and families affected by the profound tragedy of suicide loss, offering compassion, healing, and resources to help them navigate their journey of grief. And whereas Centerstone's Life Story Race marks a milestone as it celebrates its 21st anniversary, symbolizing more than two decades of effort to honor those lost to suicide, provides solace to survivors, and foster a community that believes in prevention and hope. And whereas, Life Story stands as a testament to the spirit of survivors of suicide loss, who, despite facing unimaginable pain, have united to raise awareness about suicide prevention, transforming their own experiences into a beacon of resilience and advocacy for others. And whereas, Centerstone has played a pivotal role in breaking the silence surrounding suicide, actively working to dispel stigma, raise awareness, and educate the community about the vital importance of mental health support, early intervention, and accessible resources. And whereas, this 21st anniversary Life Story Race not only commemorates the progress made over the years, but also emphasizes the ongoing commitment of Centerstone, its partners, and community supporters to continue promoting a society where every individual's life is valued. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that September 28th, 2024, shall be known, designated, and set aside as Suicide Prevention Day in Manatee County, Florida, adopted with a quorum present and voting this 24th day of September, 2024, Board of County Commissioners, Manatee County, Florida, and signed by our chair, Mike Ron.
Good morning. Everyone, I'm Victoria Tejas, and I am the Director of Development at Centerstone. I wanted to thank Commissioner Ballard and all of the Manatee County Commissioners here for recognizing September 28th as Suicide Prevention Day. I also want to thank my colleagues who are here with me today from Centerstone. And we have a few of our community partners here as well, including our partners from Manatee EMS, the Public Safety Department, and the Florida Department of Health, Manatee County. But we are all honored here to accept this proclamation. Centerstone is grateful to the Commission for recognizing this day, September 28th, as Suicide Prevention Day because it's an important day for Centerstone. Our annual suicide prevention and awareness event is that day, and there will be around 800 people from the community gathering together to heal and remember those we have lost to suicide, and to learn more about how to prevent the tragic loss of life to suicide. Suicide Prevention Day is an opportunity to bring attention to the serious public health concern and how each and every one of us can play a role in saving a life. Centerstone is deeply grateful for its longstanding partnership with you all, with the Manatee County Commission, and we know that together we can work to build a strong, healthy, safe, and resilient community for all. and resilient community for all. So thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd just thank Centerstone for all the great work you guys do in our community. You guys provide an unbelievable service to our citizens, and we're just really glad to be partners with you guys, and you guys are just amazing. So, thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you so much. We're so grateful. Thank you.
All right. We're gonna move into the next item on our agenda, which is citizen comment. This is for thirty minutes, max time limit. If we go beyond that, we do have time later on in the agenda for more citizen comment. This is, um, for, um, future agenda items only, and, um, we will start off, and you have three minutes. Please state your name, county residence, and you have three minutes to speak. And we will start with Anna Cook. Is Anna in the audience? Not seeing Anna here. We'll go to the next one. We'll go to Dalton Nelson.
Good morning, Dalton Nelson, Manatee County. Uh, I'd like to start off by saying, uh, thank you, Evan, for getting that done for me yesterday. I really do appreciate it. Uh, I've tried to schedule a bunch of meetings with you guys to try and bring you out into the community, to see some of the problems that we're, we're having. Um, I still feel kinda selfish, though, in the fact that it took, um, a friend of a friend passing a video that I made on YouTube in order to get the county to come out there and do something that they've known about for several weeks. Um, there is an inspector that is on that site almost weekly, and, with Manatee County, not to throw him under the bus, I think he's a great guy. But he's known about this problem, and he's known that this developer has had issues with keeping silt fence up and keeping up to Florida state standards, and they've allowed it to just continue and cause the problem that now we're taking county resources away from the active storm effort that's coming up, and they're having to fix something that is, something that could've been fixed a couple of weeks ago. With this storm coming up, I think it's very important that we take a look at some of the practices and the way that things have been passed over in the past, because I'm, I'm seeing a pretty good trend of the same old, same old happening, and it's not really changing. I do appreciate every one of you guys meeting with me, and any help that you guys can give would be much appreciated.
Thank you, Dalton. Appreciate it. All right. Up next is Austin Mondazi. And Austin, you're up twice. You just logged in twice, so I'm gonna give you one, one.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, man. Appreciate it. Please state your name, county residence, and you have three minutes, sir.
Yeah. Austin Mondazi, Manatee County, prior U.S. Military Intelligence. I'm here, uh, to document the endless false claims that are being presented to the Commissioners as well as to the general public, beginning with our puppies coming from puppy mills. There's absolutely no evidence that our dogs come from puppy mills, with the exception of information from CAPS, a radical animal rights activist group that is known for skewing information and publicizes. CAPS did a report on Pinellas County, and the only thing they could report about Sunshine Puppies was a dog purchased from a particular breeder. The breeder they referenced has never sold a dog to Sunshine Puppies, ever. However, we can prove that our dogs don't come from puppy mills. The problem we are facing is not the animal rights activists. They have good intentions, but they have been convinced that the information they provide is fact, when in reality it is false information, promoted by the animal rights activist fundraising machine. It is not coincidental, coincidental that the, that following ABC Seven News report by Sophia Vitello, there was a video ad from the Humane Society of Sarasota. We recorded the advertisement, and that's the problem. Every statement we're making can be verified relatively easily. Our defense towards these claims are not emotionally based. When we talk about what's happening in California, this information was reported by Los Angeles Times, not by some group that we're affiliated with. All these false claims that they are making are completely made up or are coming from completely biased sources. Yet, we are not asking you to disbelieve their information. What we're asking you to do is investigate ours. Now, they're complaining about our babies being outside, and they believe that the only reason we're having our babies outside is because of what's going on in Manatee County, when in reality, this is an enrichment program that began over a year ago in our flagship store. Understand that the desire to make sure all of our babies have proper enrichment is not a regulation. This is our personal goal, driven by love. Most of these individuals have never visited the county shelter, but we have. Most of these individuals have never visited Humane Society Shelter in Sarasota, but we have. We've seen the systems used, we've seen the lack of enrichment, we've seen the lack of protocols. We are not here to judge anyone else, but some commissioners are. And if the Commission decides to shut down a legal business operating at a higher standard than their own county operations, then it leads us all to ask a big question. Where is the justice in this action? It's something that could be addressed by this council, as well as the council to come. If a commissioner believes in shutting down a legal business because of their personal feelings, or because of the feelings brought upon by false information, what's to stop the system from shutting down other legal businesses? Once again, if you have a desire to do the proper thing through discovery, Dan Cohen is sitting in this room, hoping that you all ask him a question for as long as it might take. If you're gonna do your job, do it correctly, and, uh, I don't wanna be harassed today. Thank you for your time. God bless.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Dan Cohen. Good morning, sir. If you please state your name, county residence, and you have three minutes.
Dan Cohen, Manatee County. I know that when I am done, the Commissioners have the right to ask questions. Your questions are always welcome and encouraged. The level of harassment we've endured is, from this very small group, is beyond what you might imagine. On September twelfth, I called the police because one of the members of this group actually physically assaulted one of my managers when she struck her. We have video evidence of the assault. What began the harassment came when Veronica DiMaggio went and entered our store and took pictures of several dogs. I had the video of that day, and that day that Veronica came in, it was not a good day for her, because we do a deep clean three times a week, and this was one of those days. We had only been open one hour when she came in, and the entire place was spotless. The video clearly shows her going through the store very quickly because she didn't see anything damning, so instead, it shows her taking quick pictures of a couple of dogs that were sleeping as she quickly walked by them. She never even stopped to look at my babies. She then posted them, and the media and her represented pictures of sick, unresponsive dogs, verifiable with video she was in the store for two minutes and thirty-nine seconds. As expected, the media immediately followed this landslide of false information, which is why unfortunately I'm never available for them, reporting that four to five hundred constituents would be present at a protest that consisted of thirty-eight individuals, and a second protest of three individuals. Individuals that are predominantly residents of Sarasota County, but I know the Commission is aware of this. The Commissioners are well aware of the tactics of this group. They are always the same. You will witness it today when you hear them saying that I'm lying when everything that I've stated is verifiable. When you hear it claimed today, simply wait till the end, call on me to answer any questions you have, here, in front of everyone. If you stand in front of my store with signs that state "Stop Puppy Mills," people will honk. If you stand in front of my store with signs that say "Stop Police Violence," people will also honk. That's not evidence that we sell pup female dogs or support police violence. Reporting that the babies were lying in their own feces and urine when it's impossible in our system, reporting that I have not complied with Manatee County flooring regulations, which is another verifiable lie. I'm here today to ask the Commission to somehow stop the harass, I'm not here today to ask the Commission to stop, somehow stop the harassment and the lies. I'm asking the Commission to do not become part of the harassment by empowering the lies while ignoring verifiable truths. The office you hold are one of leadership. You are the leaders of my community. You are my leaders. I know that the positions you hold are extremely difficult, but you are here to maintain peace and bring prosperity to Manatee County. The misstep is not when the Commissioners hear the issues from the protesters. The real problem is when the Commissioners take everything that they claim is fact while disregarding clear evidence of the contrary. I am here to present the facts, I, as well as offer them to you outside of a three-minute window. It's the foundation of our country, it's the foundation of the state of Florida, and it's the foundation of this board. I'm sorry I went over. Have a good day.
You're fine, sir. Thank you very much. Six seconds. All right. Up next is Dana Dieter.
Dieter.
Dieter, sorry, ma'am. Please come forward, state your name, county residence, and you have three minutes, ma'am.
Dana Dieter, Pasco County. I have been in the pet industry for over a decade. I have spent the last four years under Sunshine Puppies. The level in care and determination Dan has towards his babies is amazing. He is constantly coming up with new ideas and protocols to make the babies' lives better. I have seen him work with animal welfare groups and welcomed him into the locations for tours. He has worked closely with so many groups, including Animal Control. Dan is currently putting together a protocol document to share with Manatee County Animal Control. He has participated in the roundtables at the city of Largo, and has been working with animal behavioralists who specialize in primates and dogs on a project for over a year. Dan has spent thousands of dollars to launch the program in Largo and has now expanded to Bradenton. All these efforts are not rules mandated by the government, they are rules and procedures from Dan. I am beyond what you would call an animal lover. I'm a fanatic. I would never work for any organization that didn't care for their babies, and I've never worked for an organization that even comes close to Dan's passion. Sophia Vitello from ABC Seven News, also from Sarasota, falsely reported several claims. Noncompliance with Manatee floor regulations, false. Sick dogs that were unresponsive, false. Dogs laying in their urine, false. No padding in the bed housing, false. Three to four hundred protesters, false. All these claims are easily verifiable with a little effort. Some of the boards have clearly already made the decision and publicly express, express your positions without any valid form of discovery. I am here as a citizen, as an animal lover, as an employee with a wonderful job who loves what I do, asking the board to do the right thing, to understand the news media reports based on ratings. I'm sure that you've never seen a report on the enrichment program that Dan has launched. I'm sure no one will cover the babies we take care of to have more playtime and more mental enrichment than any shelter that walks dogs for five minutes at a time on a leash just a few times. That kind of reporting doesn't raise millions of dollars for animal shelters. That kind of reporting doesn't get best ratings. But the Board of Commissioners and the city of Manatee County are held at a much higher standard. If you do your research by reading false claims from animal rights activist tabloids and their groups, you're setting yourself up for failure and false actions against the innocent, actions that will go unnoticed by some, but not unanswered. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning, sir. Good morning. Mike Meehan, Manatee County.
Yes, sir.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning, sir.
You cut the millage. It's a happy day. For me. And I hope everybody else. All right. Let's try. See if that comes up. Looks all right. Okay. Uh, this is just a quick primer on GASBIA accounting, which is the primary, uh, accounting, uh, legislation that most county government and state governments across the country follow. Basically, it divides the assets on your balance sheet into three buckets. One is your building and lands, which is one point four-three billion, your restricted cash of one point one-two billion, and unrestricted cash of eight hundred six million. This is right off the clerk's report, which follows GASBIA accounting. This is the real legal accounting under GASBIA, not the county cubbyhole accounting practiced by Manatee County. Unrestricted can be used for any county purpose, including committed and assigned dollars. The state of Florida has a definition of maximum reserves. Those definitions are ten percent for contingency and twenty percent for appropriations. So multiplying the ten and twenty percent times one point three-three billion, which is your current projected budget, your maximum reserves allowed is three hundred ninety-nine million. Uh, subtracting the unrestricted cash of eight hundred six million from the three ninety-nine leaves four hundred and seven million, which is available for a one-hundred-million-dollar property tax credit this year, um, leaving seven hundred million of unrestricted cash on your balance sheet for future operations, and also moving toward compliance with Florida statute. Thank you.
Next up is Heidi Harat. Harriet? Sorry, ma'am.
Good morning, and thank you for allowing me to be here. Heidi Harriet Koch. I live in Pinellas County. However, I'm a third-generation animal trainer who grew up here in Manatee County. Our family had a training farm over on Prospect Road for over forty years. I'm here to add to the conversation and, with my expertise, about, uh, an animal ban that's, uh, puppy retail ban that's being considered, and to talk about, there's more to this story, as with probably everything you deal with, there's always more to the story. And, um, so, I, a dog store owner is being harassed, a commissioner has vowed to reinstate the retail ban, the adopt-don't-shop, from the adopt-don't-shop movement. What I'm asking is this based on verifiable, verifiable facts. Here are some facts. The Centers for Disease Control banned the import of dogs to the United States from over a hundred countries in July of twenty twenty-two. In July of twenty twenty-three, they were going to bring, uh, turn that back over, but they hadn't solved the problem yet. Over a million dogs are being imported into the United States from other countries. A good portion of these dogs go to shelters and rescues. So we're told every day that our shelters are full, and again, God bless the people who do this important work. We all care about animals. Where we probably part company is how we express that and how we get involved in that. So, the Centers for Disease Control reinstated the ban, and it expired in July of twenty twenty-four. They hadn't solved the problem. There were, there are animals coming in, adoptable animals, coming into this country for shelters and rescues, because the demand for animals is greater than the amount of animals in the United States. These are verifiable facts. You can look these up. Be happy to talk to you more after this about that. So, the, the problem is, they couldn't figure out how to get the, they were having rabies problems. We're getting dogs from countries that have rabies, disease, parvovdestemper strains we haven't seen or eradicated, and also puppies underaged, falsified records. So there's a big market for this, because these dogs come in and they get sold. So you can put a retail pet ban in place, but people are still selling dogs, they're just selling them from a shelter. It's still a sale. Also, if you wanna talk about, do we know where dogs are from, the shelters are really the only place we don't know the origin of the dogs. I've been in Dan's stores, I've been in other stores. It's right there on the kennel. You can find out what you need to know about the animals. So rely on the true experts. Check for yourself. The American Veterinary Medical Association does not support a retail ban. They are the experts. They're the veterinarians. And let's talk about choice. Don't you want your residents to have a choice? If they didn't want that, he would be out of business. The stores would be out of business. People wouldn't be buying pets, the, the puppies that they choose. As a trainer, it's really important to get the right dog in your home. So, I would challenge you guys to
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Challenge you to, uh, do a study.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next up is Glenn Gibleena.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, for the record. Glenn Gibleena, future gen items. You know I'm big on solar. Do we have a policy yet? We should get one. The port is moving forward. What's a statue to statue that was broken years ago? I mean, the tow truck driver came in, broke it in three pieces, never got the insurance stuff. I did a records request on that. It's not fixed. It's in some warehouse out, out at, out at the dam. I would like to know where we are with that. Um, you know, Mike's been coming up here for about five years. I don't know why you guys just don't direct a financial advisor to sit down with Mike and say, "Look, you're here, I'm here, come back." Well, I haven't seen anything, uh, yet on that, so I think you should do that. Transparency and accountability. You know, I just, I just got back from Honor Flight. What, what an honor. I suggest all you, all you to do it. But transparency and accountability is difficult, so when you guys use your private cell phones, right? And then you want to say, "Okay, I wanna do a records request on your texts and stuff." And you guys go, "Oh, well, we got a system that could suck all that information out on county cell phones." But now you, you use your private cell phones and I do a records request. Oh, you gotta pay for that. I could've done that in fifteen seconds with the system, but now I gotta go ask for I could have done that in 15 seconds with the system, but now I gotta go ask for the personal cell number and dig..." So insult to injury, when you want me to pay because you guys are skirting the law using your private cellphones. I don't get it. You know, talk about accountability and money, right? So I did, I did a records request on the seven attorneys against Joe McPlaist, just to see the process and the procedure of how you did that, right? You got seven, so when I did that, I said, "Well, what did it cost?" $55,000, $31,000, $27,000, $10,000, another 10 grand, nine grand for expert witnesses. But here's the thing, I went to say, "How did it happen?" Guess what? No phone calls, no texts, and no emails. How do you spend hundreds of thousands of dollars without providing that information? Was it clairvoyance that you hired this one firm with seven attorneys? I don't get it. You guys need to do a better job, you need to be more transparent, and it's like the ADUs. Commissioner Doran said, "You'd bring that back," when Baruff got his big ADU in Lot Size. We never heard anything about it. Anyways, I'm a Frederick Douglass, gluteus maximus Republican, and I suggest you be as well. I hope that's more palatable.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Deana Sabo, Manatee County resident. I'm here today because September 10th of this month, as the public comment was ending, Kevin Van Ostenbridge went on record with a few comments regarding the shelter, and I think that this is a perfect example of why we need to reinstate the Shelter Advisory Board. We asked for that last year to be considered, we were told that sometime the first quarter of this year that all of you would be reviewing all of the county advisory boards, and it's September, haven't seen it on the agenda, haven't heard that there's a conversation, and yet we still don't have one, so I have to have three minutes every two weeks to address you, and then you get to rebuttal, and then I have to come back two weeks later to rebuttal again. So here's my rebuttal, Mr. Van Ostenbridge. You pointed out that there were only six dogs outside when I had said there were more. I think we can all agree that the shelter is a changing environment, and at any given day, after a long weekend, there could be 50 dogs outside, there could be one, there could be 15. It changes, nobody is disagreeing on that fact. However, the shelter is not prepared and ready for capacity, ever. The electrical isn't working right, you cannot support enough air conditioners nor heaters to keep capacity comfortable. We are sorely ill-prepared to keep these dogs in any sort of level of comfort. So that's my first issue. Second issue with what you said was that there were no dogs waiting until noon to go to the restroom. That one got the attention of a lot of volunteers. My email was inundated with proof that you're really misspeaking. So here's one of the boards from recently. You can see here that there are 24 dogs that didn't get out for their first morning bathroom break until well after 10:00 AM. This is only one board, I just brought one for an example. So this means that those 24 dogs sat there for 20 hours, if you do the math on last outs being 2:00 PM. So this is not okay, and I wasn't going to let it stand on record. We are doing a terrible job at that shelter because the resources aren't being allocated properly. I'm not faulting the staff nor the management, but you guys have been sitting on this situation for years, and it's not getting any better, and then you want to put crap like this on record? No, not having it. So lastly, the other comment that was made was that it is not, and I quote, "100 degrees 24 hours a day." So my question is, is it okay if they're outside for 13 hours when it's 100 degrees? Where's the threshold?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Nope, no thank you, applaud please. All right, next up is Joyce Jordan. Good morning, ma'am.
Hi, Joyce Jordan, Manatee County. I also have noticed that we have asked you many times to come to the shelter and see for yourself, but the only one that has is Cruz, which, thank you. So I'm going to give you a little education on what we have at the shelter. This row that says "short kennels" and this row that says "long kennels" has 25 inside kennels and 25 outside kennels with a guillotine in between. So they only hold 25 dogs inside, where there's air conditioning and heat. This side that's labeled the agility kennels, but I really call it impound because that's what it was when I started there many years ago. And it is even worse, it has, we think, and honestly, I haven't counted them because I wasn't over there long enough to count them, but we think it's 20 kennels on the inside, and then we think it's 20 on the outside. Now granted, they're all undercover, but they don't have air conditioning and they don't have heat. And we have, what is it, six air conditioners?
Four.
Four air conditioners, which were there...
One is broke.
Yeah, well, the one that's broke is a mess. It leaves a puddle underneath it every day because it's never been fixed. And they are on these rows. They have one hose that comes out, and sometimes when I would walk them, I would stand in front of that hose just to cool off for a little bit. And other times, I was walking the outside dogs, I would bring them in and walk them through here so that they could actually feel air conditioning and feel cool for maybe a minute or two. I was trying to make them feel a little bit better. We had a living room, but of course, that had to go because we have too many dogs. That has to hold dogs now. Everywhere you go in that shelter, there are dogs. But 70 can be outside at any time, and I'm telling you, they usually are because I have walked those halls and I have walked those dogs, and they are not feeling okay. They have made it through the summer, I am amazed because I thought this summer was the worst ever, and I wasn't walking them this year. So, last year, it was hot enough, and like I said, I would walk them inside, I would do whatever I could to cool them off because it is too hot for them to be outside in those teeny tiny kennels for 23 hours a day because they don't get enough walks and they don't get enough time out.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, that ends our 30 minutes of public comment time. Like I said, again, we will have another opportunity at the end of the agenda for more public comment on future agenda items. There are two Commissioners on the board, Commissioner Van Ostenbridge.
It's all right, Commissioner, we don't necessarily have to get into all that. If you want to expedite things and move it along, it's fine.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. I'm also on the board, just real quick, right now in the county attorney's office, we have a very comprehensive animal breeding ordinance that is going to be coming forward. It'll be in our October meeting. It's very comprehensive with regards to all animal breeders in Manatee County, which include our garage breeders, backyard breeders, shed breeders, fighting dog breeders, and the ones that are doing it correctly. So this ordinance will be very, very comprehensive, and it'll be out of the county attorney's office probably in several weeks or so, but it will be in front of the next, I believe, hopefully the October 8th meeting, if not, it will be at our, when our next regular scheduled county commission meeting for review and hopefully approval. But with that, we'll move on to citizens' comment on consent agenda items only. For consent agenda, there is Mr. Gibilina.
For the record, Glenn Gibilina, Manatee County. Item 9, the settlement. So, you know, it's funny that when you have an in-house employee that's probably a whistleblower come forward and file suit because he was unjustly terminated, a lot of things start happening. One of them that was in there that I found interesting was number 14, Attorney's Fees. Parties shall bear the cost of Attorney's Fees. Well, that certainly puts a stop on excessive attorneys from inside and outside. So, you didn't want this to go forward, you settled it because if he would have gone to a deposition, and I've been to depositions, and I've been deposed, they're brutal. They find out all the skeletons in the closet. I don't think the county wanted to go that far. And quite frankly, he was just a bad actor. He also used his private phone for text messages. So he shares the blame as well. My point is that you go after, when someone works for you, you do it in-house. You've got nine attorneys, a $1.3 million budget, right? And you settle that in-house. But, a simple Doa case, let's get seven attorneys to breed up a pro se litigant, right? So I'm comparing the two parties of how you settle lawsuits. In-house because you don't want the skeletons in the closet, right, to come out, because a deposition would have been brutal. And by the way, he hired one of the best civil attorneys in town on a federal level, so all I am saying, you should level the playing field, you should try to litigate well before we rack up $200,000 in taxpayers' bill, because you're never going to get it from Joe. He was a bad actor, you wanted to keep his mouth shut, you paid him off. That's how I see that lawsuit. Thank you. Do a better job.
All right, are there anyone on the phone for comment on consent?
No callers.
All right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment on consent. Next, we'll move to a motion to approve consent. Let me get the consent.
I think I started to step up on the board figure.
Yeah.
On the screen.
Mm-hmm. That stopped. There it is, it just got up. All right. There's been a motion to approve consent by Commissioner Van Ostenbridge, a second by Commissioner Ballard, all those, and we'll cast your votes now. It's there, it's there now. Is that on yours? All right, we're doing it again. Is that there now? All right, we'll take a by vote, a voice vote. There was a, by Commissioner Van Ostenbridge, my second by Commissioner Ballard, motion to approve consent, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Seeing none?
Yeah, you like that?
Huh?
She's got to make sure she got it in.
Item carries six to zero. All right, now moving on. All right, we've done, we're going to item number, we've done, we're going to item 53.
53?
Sorry, 50, yeah, 53. Item 53, and who, that's a presentation bomb request, does anybody need a presentation bomb request? County Commissioner, was that the change that you were requesting?
No.
No, no one, okay.
Change to nonconsent.
It was on consent, all right, thank you, sir. All right, there's a motion on the board. Okay, I've got them, moved by Commissioner Cruz, second by Commissioner Turner. I'd like to open the item for public comment. If anyone interested in giving public comment on item 53?
Do you have any items in the record?
I don't know, I guess I'm supposed to read in the record again. Adoption of ordinance 24, 2480, establishing Del Webb Sun Chase Communities Development District. All right, is there any public comment on item 53? Is there anyone on the phone for item 53?
No callers.
All right, thank you. Again, moved by Commissioner Cruz, second by Commissioner Turner, if anyone cast your votes at this time. Are you good? Oh, you're still out?
Yeah.
All right, we need to take another voice vote. All those in favor of item 53, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries six to zero. Commissioner Beardon can't abstain, but we just did a voice vote.
I think we need IT to come down.
Yeah, I think we need to jump on his.
Do we have any more votes?
All right, now we move into item 55, this is on the regular agenda. This is the appointment of five representatives to the Children's Service Advisory Board. There should be a matrix for everyone to look at. Yes, ma'am.
Commissioners, I would request that all of the current representatives be reappointed. This board requires a ton of time, and there is quite a learning curve to understand how to do these applications, how to review, so the people who are already on the board have a real advantage in understanding how to interpret these applications and how to review them. It takes people sometimes years to understand actually how to properly interpret the applications and learn the results first process.
So moved.
Thank you.
Madam Attorney.
No, she's going to say...
Madam Attorney's then jump in.
Process. Yeah, we...
You're up, you're up.
Well, we need to go one by one for each position respectfully, Commissioners.
Amanda, just why don't you just make the motion for each one?
I can do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to open up for nominations at this time for a representative from United Way.
I will nominate Debbie Tapp.
Okay. Are there any nominations for United Way?
I move to close nominations.
Okay, is there any public comment on the appointment of, for United Way Representative?
You don't need a second.
Okay, you don't need a second. Hey, seeing none here, is there anybody on the phone that would like to comment on...
No callers.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, nominations have been closed, there's only one appointee, there's only one applicant that applied for that, so...
All right, we can move on to school board representative.
We have to officially vote.
Yeah, let's vote.
Yeah. I know you're excited.
I'm ready. I'm just trying to get us through it.
All right, all those in favor of the appointment...
We know what we're doing on these.
All these in favor, all in favor of the appointment of Debbie Tapp as United Way Representative, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, Ms. Tapp has been reappointed. All right, Commissioner Ballard.
Okay.
All right, I need to open up nominations for school board representative.
I think there's only one applicant.
Yep.
Nominate.
We nominate Chad Choate.
All right.
I move to close nominations.
All right, thank you, sir, the motion to move nominations. Is there any public comment on the appointment of Chad Choate to serve as a school board representative? Yeah, Jesus. Is there anyone on the phone?
We don't have food, actually.
Is there anyone on the phone that had a public comment of appointment of Chad Choate as...
No callers.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, all those in favor of Chad Choate being appointed as a school board representative, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving into licensed health professional, I'd like to open up the nominations for licensed mental health professional.
And Christie, is there anyone, so this is a new, this is a new person regardless? Okay.
Right, that's one of the reasons why the motion's...
Okay. I've opened up nominations for licensed mental health professional. Is there anyone...
I will nominate Emily Robertson.
Okay. Are there any nominations from the floor?
You don't need to move to close.
There's going to move to close nominations. Is there any public comment regarding Emily Robinson being appointed as the licensed mental health professional?
No.
Seeing none? Is there anybody on the phone with comment on licensed mental health professional, Emily Robinson?
No callers.
All right, thank you, sir. I'm going to close public comment, and all those in favor of Emily Robinson being appointed as the licensed mental health professional, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And, all right, she has been appointed. All right, child advocate, I would like to open the nominations for the child advocate. There's two appointees to serve, so at this time, Commissioner Ballard, you have a nominee.
I will nominate Carol Ann Garofola.
Okay. And then we need one more. Oh, you want to each one? Oh, you want to each one individually?
Yeah, you can have, you can have two nominations at the same time.
All right, and I need, we need one more.
Yeah. I will nominate, oh gosh, does anybody have another nomination?
We rely on you.
Okay.
This is your show.
Mr. Brady.
I will nominate, I'm going to nominate Barbara Byrne.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion to close nominations? Can I get a motion to close nominations?
I move to close nominations.
Thank you, sir. All right, I'll open up the public comment on Barbara Byrne or Carol Ann Garofola as, yes, sir.
Amanda's exactly right. It's a tough learning curve on any of these nominations, so I'm glad you're reappointing Carol Ann and other ones like her, because it's a tough job to do, and you don't learn it overnight. So, good move, thank you.
All right, is there anyone on the line that wants to comment on child advocate appointees?
No callers.
All right, thank you, sir, a closed public comment. All those in favor of Barbara Byrne and Carol Ann Garofola being appointed and reappointed to the child advocate, say aye.
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 Madam Attorney.
We should really be voting for each one separately.
Okay. All right, well, let's go, okay, we open them together, and then we'll vote on them together. All right, let's go Barbara Byrne first, who's all in favor of Barbara Byrne?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, Barbara's been appointed. All those in favor of Carol Ann Garofola, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
That was so much better than that.
No, I know.
It was.
Carol Ann has, Carol Ann Garofola has been reappointed. All right.
Thank you.
And that is the end of the nominations for the Children's Service Advisory Board.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
All right, we've already done, we have done 56. Now we're moving on to Public Works, item 57, Riverview Boulevard, update on temporary speed humps.
Yeah, I know. Speed humps are a hump.
Morning, sir.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners, Madam County Attorney, Mr. County Administrator. For the record, Vishal Kapkard, Public Works Traffic Engineering Division Manager. This is an update to an item which was presented to the board on January 9th of this year. On that day, the board directed us, and I'm going to, this is already part of the agenda, I'm just going to refresh a little bit of memory here. On that day, we had provided this exhibit identifying general locations of where we would be placing or considering to place temporary speed humps. And this is typical of our procedures. We want to put them, the temporary ones, the rubber ones, for at least 90 days, see if there is any feedback from the community, and then go from there. And if there is generally positive feedback, then we go ahead and make them permanent asphalt, and that's the end of the story, which is clearly not the case here. So, this is, the red ones are the locations where we placed exactly. So, the previous one was the windows, these are the ones where we placed. The properties that you see are in blue, after we placed them, they have objected to those placements. For various reasons, for specifically the location number one, the citizens, both the citizens, they had identified drainage-related issues and attributed directly to the speed humps being placed in front of their property. And due to the urgency of that situation, on September 3rd, we did remove that immediately, so that we don't exacerbate that situation. So, that is right now gone. Number two has complaints from, or no longer any support from those who are identified here in this location, and they have cited noise, the placement in front of their driveways, the sign placement in front of the driveways, or the proximity thereof, and they no longer support that. Number three, we had to, after we installed the temporary one, we had to move it a few feet over because it was in front of their small walkway that led into their house. After that, we have received positive feedback, so no issue there. So, in summary, number one, we have already removed that. Number two, no longer supported, and therefore we are requesting board action that we no longer consider these for permanent installations, and then we go for a permanent installation for number three. And that is what we have right now on the agenda.
All right, thanks, sir. Are there any questions?
I'd just like to hear from public comment, Mr. McClure.
All right, thank you, I'll pull them up. Okay, we have a motion removed, Commissioner Turner has moved it, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz, allowed to call public comment. One comment, Todd McClure. Sir, state your name, county residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Well, thanks for leaving that up. Where is it?
It's there.
It's there?
It's there.
Great, first timer here, so.
We'll walk you through it.
Thank you. Todd McClure, Manatee County. So, good morning, myself along with my wife and our four children, live at 4422 Riverview, which is here. Can you see my finger? Yeah, okay, perfect, yeah, nice.
Yeah, we got it.
Great, so, along with our neighbors, my in-laws, Patrick and Amy Heckathorn, who also, also Wayne and Sandy Scroggins, who, all three of us are all right along here. And we were the original requesters of traffic calming measures in this area, namely speed bumps. My in-laws, myself, my wife submitted public comment in favor of speed bumps just last week before the end of the trial period. My father-in-law wishes he could be here, ongoing health issues prevent him from attending. If you reference the map, you can see that our stretch is a straightaway and is used by drivers as a speedway to save time cutting through our neighborhood rather than going to Third Avenue Northwest, driving by the cemeteries on their way, to continue on their way. We all know that speed bumps work, everyone in this room slows down for speed bumps. Furthermore, during the 90-day trial, we noticed a significant reduction in the volume of cars even attempting to come down our street. Seems as if the speed bumps served as more of a deterrent of traffic even before they had the chance to calm and slow that traffic. My young kids play in our front yard, they walk over to Mamie and Baba's house, they cross the street back and forth to the guest house. I will point out that my in-laws are also the owner of the house across the street, so we do have both sides of the road there, which I feel is a significant softball for speed, one speed hump to be placed. With due respect to County Public Works, I've lived in that location for 10 years, I feel we missed the mark on the speed humps down here. I know a lot of these residents, I can't blame them for wanting them removed. If they didn't ask for them, why did we put them there in the first place? We have a unique situation at 4406 and 4325 Riverview, both sides of the street, owned by one person, who is in favor of a speed bump in front of their house. And so, thank you for your consideration. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Manassasbridge.
So, my next, once we conclude public comment, I have another question for staff.
Oh, you go to staff, okay. Thank you, sir. All right, staff, you're up again.
Want any more public comment?
Come on.
Is there any more? Is there any more public comment on this item? Seeing none, is there anyone on the phone who give a public comment on item 57?
No callers.
All right, thank you, sir. Staff, you're up again.
So.
Commissioner Manassasbridge.
Yeah, if we were to move forward with the recommended motion, then I guess my request would be, because I'm not sure how the driveways line up, like, there's more to it, right, than we've owned both sides of the street, obviously. So, I guess my request is that we go ahead and move forward with this motion, recommended motion, and then staff go out to that site and determine whether or not a speed hump is viable in that location.
So, as you mentioned, Commissioner Manassasbridge, you are very right. There is, because of the driveway placements or actually closed spacing of the driveways, some of them have circular driveways, there is a presence of fire hydrant, there is a ditch right there, and we want to make sure that our procedure typically has 100 feet in the area of the placement of a speed hump. We want those property owners to be okay with it. So, if we go ahead with this motion, and then what we can do is, we can go back and then draw an area, if we identify a location, and say, these four or five houses, if we can get support from them, we would like to document that. And then, depending on board's desire, we can either come back to present that or just implement 90 days and then go from there. So, we'll leave it up to you for that, but yes, we are definitely open to that. Also, we'll consider, given the previous complaints, we would also talk to our stormwater maintenance folks to make sure that we are not creating something that we cannot see.
Perfect, that's what I'd like to do. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, Commissioner Turner.
Do you know if it would create, sorry, do you know if it would create the same flooding issues if we put a speed bump where the family compound is?
And that is, I don't know, that's why we would like.
So, we could do that, study, and then, okay, thank you.
So, as part of our locating a viable location, we would like to talk to our stormwater maintenance individuals and see if they have noticed anything, and/or if we identify a location that it may or may not create. And even when we do that, we will still do the temporary first, so that we will still have some test before we go ahead and do the asphalt.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, any other questions for staff? Seeing none, we have a motion on the board by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Cruz, if everyone please cast their votes now. Will you back up? Okay. All right, and the motion carries six to zero. Thank you very much. All right, County Attorney, you want to jump ahead in your comments with regards to?
Yes, if I could briefly.
Yes, ma'am.
If we could go back to the topic of the meeting, the land use meeting that's currently scheduled for Thursday. Upon closer review of the board's procedures pursuant to Resolution 22-051, the board has to make a motion and approve that motion by a majority vote in order to cancel the hearing. So, I have a draft motion prepared, if the board will entertain such.
Yes, ma'am.
The motion I would recommend is, and this was in consultation with Ms. Knapp, I move to cancel the land use meeting of the board currently scheduled for Thursday, September 26th, sorry, I should slow down for the clerk, and authorize the county administrator or his designee to take the appropriate action to reschedule and re-advertise the items on that agenda to October 15th at 9:00 a.m. or another date acceptable to staff and the respective applicants.
So moved, with one question, which is, we're certain that there's no way to continue the meeting, we would have, we have to cancel it.
I don't believe you can continue it, you have to cancel it, because it can only be continued once it's opened.
I'm just trying to avoid the re-advertising and the whole process, right?
Okay.
Yeah, I get it, just making sure she was following up on the rest of it, so.
Okay, there's been a motion by Commissioner Manassasbridge. Looking for a second?
Second.
All right, well, it's on the board, all right. George moved it, and it's already been seconded by Commissioner Ballard to cancel the 26th land use meeting and direct staff to re-advertise it for October 15th. If everyone could please cast your votes at this time. And the motion carries six to zero. Thank you, Madam Attorney.
Thank you.
All right, are there any Commissioner agenda items that I'd like to come forward with? Seeing none? Yes, sir. I didn't see you on the board.
I'm not on the board, I'm just saying, there's still people sitting out there, I'm not sure if there was additional public comment.
Public comment on future agenda.
Okay.
Because you ran out of 30 minutes.
All right, so what we'll do is, I'll go back and open up for assistant comment for future agenda items.
Morning, Commissioners, my name is Joe McClash, I sent you an email yesterday, so the subject that I'm talking about, of course, is the wetland policies and our request. So, first of all, I want to thank you for your vote at the last meeting to basically go back to the original wetland policies for this community. As you are well aware, I was the one that challenged the change of those policies, and I just want to emphasize that it was not a frivolous type of challenge. The challenge was based upon two main criteria. One was a public interest test that was not met, and also the fact that you're supposed to have scientific data that supported the decision. November 19th, you're going to have a new board. I think it's important to consider saving the county money. There's an October 15th hearing on the fees. The new board members coming in, as well as the two existing ones, Commissioner Bearden and Commissioner Cruz, expressed at the last meeting a desire not to seek the fees, that would be a majority. There was at least two of you, if not three, that, you know, it just popped up on the agenda that day, and I appreciate your taking the time to consider it. It's really a cost-saving measure. Settlement is all about, one, predictability and saving money. And so, what I'm asking you for to consider is just a stipulated dismissal in the case where we all bear our own costs, our attorney fees, and that would resolve the matter. If not, then what you're going to have is a new board that comes in, and then are going to be tasked with doing it. If you don't feel comfortable doing that, there should be a least direction to continue the hearing, to allow the new board to get installed, and then they could take the appropriate action if you don't feel comfortable, for whatever reason. All I could tell you is that, based upon the new board members coming in, there's not the appetite to seek fees against me. And really, when you look at the common sense of it all, you're all looking to do what I was seeking to do when I challenged the comprehensive plan, and that was to restore the original wetland policies, which I really appreciate the vote, six to zero, last meeting. So, I'm here to answer any questions. I think there was, you know, a lot of maybe things that were just hit on you, but this process was supposed to be a real informal process. You know, it's not supposed to be like a real suit across the street. You know, it's supposed to be for a citizen to be able to say, hey, government, you didn't do something right. And then you have a hearing, and what's unique about this hearing, no matter what you did that day approving that comprehensive plan change, the county had to introduce all that evidence again, I would've had to produce my evidence, and then the judge would've ruled, and then, of course, the governor and cabinet could've.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Manassasbridge.
Well, you may have more people who want a public comment, sir.
Are there more, is there anyone out there that would like to give other public comment? Seeing none, Commissioner? Phone, is there anyone on the phone that would like to give additional public comment on future agenda item?
No callers.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Manassasbridge.
Yeah, thank you, sir. I just kind of reiterate some of the things I said before. This is not in any way, shape, or form the county going after anyone. This is a bill that was run up on the taxpayers, and a judge has determined that money is owed to the taxpayers. It's our responsibility, in my opinion, to, you know, continue to move forward with collecting the money that is owed to taxpayers, just like we do with so many other bills that citizens accumulate. This is just another example of that. I think we should continue to just move forward as we have been, and again, once the judgment is made on the 15th, that doesn't mean that a check arrives on the 15th. If the new board comes in and decides not to pursue collecting those fees, that's entirely their right, and they're, you know, it's up to them. So, I just move that we essentially continue to stay the course and then hand things over to the new board.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, seeing no other comments by the Commissioners, thank you. All right, County Attorney, you already made your comments. County Administrator, any comments, or?
I do want to reiterate to the board and to the public to continue to monitor the storm as it's moving in. We are going to be posting information on the county's website and our social media pages, and to just bear in mind the specific risks associated with any storm, they're all different, so please take it seriously and continue to monitor. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Bearden wants to ask you a question.
What recommendations would you give the community in preparing, to prepare for the actual storm and storm surge coming into our communities?
So, we have opened up 11 different sandbag locations throughout the county already. We are making preparations for our utilities, Public Works, our stormwater teams out in the field to be ready for those impacts. But, for specific property owners, make sure that you have your storm readiness plans in place. Make sure you have the ability to have food and water in case the transportation systems are compromised, or if water systems may be shut off. But, most importantly, continue to look at local media and the county's resources for But, most importantly, continue to look at local media and the county's resources for updates, because this is a, a storm that has really, it's a fast-moving storm, and some changes are, are likely, so we really need to make sure people are plugged in and paying attention for the, the updates as they occur.
All right, thank you, sir. All right.
Oh, gosh.
All right. Are there any other Commissioner comments?